If I'm on the board of JAC, I'm gonna move item six up and I'll do item five. I'm switching on my flock because Brad has got a class, he's got the pin two in his shop, that's for three to do that. So this time we'll do emergency service with Brad at Gilmour.
Thank you, good evening. First thing I ask you to consider approving a fee schedule for, especially the fire marshal's office. Currently, we only have one fee that we say is just a general fifty dollar fee, it's a general fire permit fee. I went to all the surrounding counties, got their information, and come up with a fee schedule for us, I think it worked good. And I'll bring some more revenue, so I ask that you consider approving one.
I don't quite understand that, when you said general emergency service fee, for what?
Um, if you build a little building, basically, we gotta, we'll have to go in, make sure you got your exit locks up, make sure your fire extinguisher there, we'll have to revere your plans before you start building. That kind of thing, all that right now, it's only a fifty dollar fee. So we're trying to break that out, or that might turn into a winner off fee. Try to bring a little more revenue, we're spending a lot of hours on there, it's only a fifty dollars return. A lot of other counties are, a lot more than some of the fees on here, but we felt like it was worth it.
Most of it's for maintenance and all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, I'll be sure.
Two cent, plus four foot, that's anything over five thousand.
Yes, sir.
So does that mean you attach that on to the hundred, meaning that we are...
No, it's a two cent square fee.
For the building, both sides of it?
Basically a hundred.
Okay.
Any other questions?
What are you asking me to do?
Did y'all approve this fee schedule?
I mean, how many, what, what did you raise?
Um, fifty dollars, well, they're, they're, they're from one item to several items.
Exactly. The father's always been saying that.
We've never had a fee, we've only had a fifty dollar fee for fireworks, just covering under that general fee that I was speaking to. But we, we go to a firework show, we're spending five, six, seven, eight hours on these firework shows, two or three personnel, so...
Well, that's really wonderful.
Yes, sir. And unfortunate thing, most of them are nonprofit, so we're not gonna collect anything anyway.
Motion, Mr. Carr, go say, make a judgment, any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Our fee. Uh, I'd be a memorandum of agreement between the Marine Corps, Kent, the Gern, Bladen County EMS, and the Lees Town Fire Department, the town will be taking this item as well, on their board, as well as Bladen Lakes State Forest, basically what happened, the Marines folks in Bladen Lakes State Forest had come to an agreement, they built a landing zone, over on the State Forest, somewhere off of Johnson Town Road. That disagreement says that if they have an accident on their aircraft, that we'll respond. On the county's behalf, we're just talking about EMS, assist, until they can get their assets here. And once they get their assets on site, they'll take it.
Did they ever give us any compensation for anything, did they do, as we was having all pre- pre-vonage? So we responsible for everything that goes on with those guys? You don't give no kind of donations on that?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Pleasure board. Specialized by Mr. Good, and second by Mr. Britton, any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All favors. Thank you, Mr. Bradley.
Thank you.
Need to go back to item four, matters of interest commissioners?
I got, I got one that I want to bring up. Is, um, I've been through several counties, and when I go into some of their facilities, I have noticed something that, when I walk into the facilities, I see, and I would like to ask the commission that if we could consider doing the same thing. When you go into tho- those facilities, with other counties, you see, it's like the portrait over here of a wall with the commissioners that says whose commissioners in that county, they have this, uh, portrait of the commissioners that's acted during that term. And I'm saying it would be nice if our county could just do that to each one of the county facilities, just had, when you come into social services or into the entryway, that we have a sign, a portrait there of whose county commissioners in Bladen County. And I would like for that being concerned, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Martin look at, see if it's gonna be the drastic cost, get back with us, see if the economic people, or what we need to do.
Can you want to please look at that and get back with us?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have anything? If not, individuals, delegation, wish to address the commissioner, I know we have one concerning mental health services, Ms. Charlotte Smith.
Thank you all for your time, the opportunity to talk with you tonight. Go ahead, and you all should have this in email format. Just wanted to go over the LME and MCOs, and the lack of services offered, the accountability, concerns about the LME and MCOs, reporting their outcomes, and, and then request something from you. So, I don't know if you all know what a LME/MCO is. They did come, Cardinal and East Point came at the last commissioners meeting. So, they are responsible for managing funding, all the funding streams for mental health and behavioral health. They also receive block grant funding and state funding, pilot program funding, and they're responsible for managing all of this. The North Carolina LME and MCOs went from nine to four agencies in 2016. There's been a lot of confusion about where people should go to get mental health, behavioral health services, since they consolidated. It just, the industry keeps changing, so no one really knows for sure what's going on. Funding, um, for that the LME, LME do and MCOs do is mental health, substance abuse disorders, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. So that includes all, all of those services. And according to the committee that I've referenced in this session, we have a copy of, the LME and MCO's job is to be cost-effective, um, they're supposed to provide less, less waste, less fraud, and abuse, reinvest in the communities that they're, they're serving, and come up with new ideas and opportunities to assist the citizens that need their services, and manage the manpower, so that's all this is. So, lack of services that I've found, um, with, with my job, we've been trying to investigate the opioid epidemic, and trying to talk with stakeholders in the community about how to combat the opioid epidemic. So, anyway, while we were doing this, we noticed that we are, um, we're, we're coming up short. Most agencies, East Point, which is our LME/MCO, um, refer Bladen County citizens to mental health and behavioral health services outside of our county. They're not in our county, they have to go outside of our county. While investigating the substance abuse services, we found that there was a company by the name of Life Bridge Healthcare in Elizabethtown, and I've sent you all an email about the findings. They, their phone number didn't work, their crisis number went to a Walmart gift card hotline, and, um, they weren't open during the hours that they advertised to be open. Also investigating, I found that New Journey Counseling is supposed to be offering DWI services. And when I called to ask about their services, the lady hung up on me when I asked her if I could meet here in Elizabethtown. I went to their office and the door was locked. And then today, I received some information about Hope for North Carolina. It's supposed to be a crisis counseling program. They advertise submitting press releases, educational information for mental health, and it is not on here, but I can email you the information. What you already have the information, because I think East Point emailed it to you all. When we called that number, that says that they're offering counseling for victims that were displaced because of disaster, the lady said that all that she has is a flyer, which we all have seen, and a business card. There's no counseling, or, all she does is refer to a provider, which is what we pay East Point to do. Now, the substance abuse services are hard to find, there is an AA group that I found, but that's, that's all that I've found in Bladen County. East Point no longer provides classes in Bladen County, they used to, Ms. Cheryl Harris, I know she's here tonight, um, she used to provide classes, but they cut that out for Bladen County. I don't know why they did that, but they cut it out, um, to help educate our community on the different issues involving mental health and behavioral health. Um, there is a waiting list for developmental disability services and behavioral and mental health. Some of those services, our consumers have to wait to receive. So, um, and we don't have any tell me that I'm aware of. I was asked, um, who does the MCOs and LMEs answer to? Well, they use our tax dollars, they're funded by our tax dollars, so they answer to you. They answer, they should be answering to our elected officials. So, um, accountability, that these agencies, the managing agencies, are not providing enough information and education in our area for mental health and behavioral health. Some of you have addressed, tried to address this the other night, when the CEOs of Cardinal and East Point were here. Substance abuse services are not readily available here, um, there is a waiting list, like I talked about. Um, the funding is either not enough, which it has been cut, the funding has been cut the last two years, it's either not enough, or it's not managed, it's being mismanaged, because we're not getting the services. And the CEOs of those agencies don't attend management, quality management meetings. They're not, it just doesn't seem like we're getting what we're paying for. The concerns about reporting their outcomes, I've tried to find where they are supposed to be reporting, um, they're supposed to be doing surveys, um, they were, they were posting that, I'm sorry, my mouth is so dry. They were posting that on their websites until 2013, which is exactly when they consolidated, and they changed it up again. So anyway, the survey, well, East Point has a survey, but Cardinal does not have a survey or their outcome since 2013. East Point does have surveys available, thank you. Anyway, um, they do have a, um, survey, but the survey that they have is 2014, 2015, and it's dropped in double digits, as far as customer satisfaction, as, East Point. Cardinal, I don't know, they won't publish that. Um, and the services, as far as Medicaid, East Point's rate, as of October the first, 2015, which is the only real number that I could find, is a hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents per member. Is that really, how much care are they getting there? Services in Bladen County have decreased. So additional concerns, um, frequent consolidations of LMEs over the past decade have made it difficult. You don't know where to go. Um, substance abuse services, we are lacking. Cardinal innovation and East Point did not give any reports the other night when they were here. They didn't explain what they were gonna do, they didn't explain how it's gonna be better, they didn't even give the surveys or, or the outcomes to us, they didn't, they didn't. Neither agency, um, have provided their, like I said, their financials. And then, there, the CFO of East Point was indicted, because he was accused for, accused of embezzling money, okay, we all know that. Um, the legislators questioned Cardinal's CEO, which was the gentleman here the other day that wouldn't answer our questions, or your questions. Um, he didn't answer mine either, I reached out to him, but, and he, he makes, he can top over a million dollars in salary. And where, how do we navigate this mental health system? Because when I reached out about the, um, the Life Bridge not being open, their crisis number not working, East Point said that they did not manage that company here. But they're supposed to be our managing entity in Bladen County, but they don't manage that one. But the same lady says that she owns the one in Lumberston, and they said that they manage that one. So anyway, there's just a lot of questions. And, um, other related issues to think about, it's not just mental health and behavioral health. These issues reach beyond the person, the patient that has the issue. Because you're, you're seeing more in foster care, you know, people have substance abuse problems or mental health problems, and they're being stripped from their home. That's costing us more money, for one, I know it's all, you know, the bottom line shows it. Um, but it's quadrupled, the foster care quadrupled from 2013 to 2015. And if you read the reports, it's largely due to alcohol and prescription drug use. The crime and unemployment rate, you know, all this has to do with it too. And then if you, if, if we consolidate these two, MCOs and LMEs, is it gonna be too big to fail? I mean, we've heard that, right, too big to fail? We don't wanna assist them that's gonna be too big to fail. So anyway, to rack things up, what I'd like to request from you all is to please, will you write the secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services, and ask for the consolidation between East Point and Cardinal not be approved? It has not been approved, and if he doesn't approve it, then it won't happen. Would you ask the secretary, the secretary, um, to obtain, um, what it needs for mental health and behavioral health from East Point? How can we, um, better our mental health and behavioral services? Will you please take the information I have, along with the references link, and there are links that I've sent you, and submit it to the state and federal elected officials on behalf of Bladen County, and help North Carolina solve the mental health and behavioral issues? And will you please ask for the reports and data explaining how East Point has improved outcomes in their field in Bladen County?
Ms. Miss, Miss Billups, um, I have taken some initiative, I answered some of those questions that you have spoken about, you know? And it's kinda, it's real complex, when you get to talking to them about the structure of what they're doing, and from what I gather, I'm not insurance agent, and I don't know about insurance and high health insurance work, but from all, everything I get when I talk to guys, and talk to people, legislators, and some of the MCOs and those guys, and that, they are running big health insurance agencies. And they are there to manage Medicaid, Medicaid, Medicaid funding, and the incentive is for them to limit the resources that they spend, to be cost-efficient, to a point that they get actually, what would you say, subsidized or reimbursed by the amount of money that they save, not by the amount that they spend. It's like a big insurance company.
Right.
And the bigger the insurance company, they say, the more, more efficient they can be. That's the method that is telling me about how they handle those, those claims. Is that it's, it's based on, like, you can talk about Cardinal, he gets paid his reimbursement and gets his salary based on how much money he can save at the end of the year. That's how he get paid, by what he saves. So it's a, it's some, it's some key facts into it, then they talk about the mental health Medicaid expansion. They said that was one of the indicators that drove the consolidation, that we didn't get Medicaid expansion. That money is being allocated to the state legislators, and they're controlling how it comes to the MCOs and what they have to do with it. And that's what they're doing, is looking at those efficient models that can keep the cost at the lowest, not about the best service from what I'm understanding, but to keep the cost at the lowest expected, like an insurance company, they had to make money.
But they're, they're not an insurance company. They're managing our money, they're not an insurance company. And they are managing our tax dollars, and we are not getting the services that we're paying for.
I agree with that, of course. Anyone else have a thought or comment or question?
I got one, and I support what you're saying, I made some of those calls after seeing your email, just followed up on it. Uh, one thing I'd like to add to what you had to say. Last Wednesday night in Wilmington, there was a ten county-wide district meeting for county commissioners, and, uh, Ms. Moon Goins was there and myself, and I shared this with you. And you'll be hearing more on it in the very near future. All ten counties, we went for one function and one thing, but it totally turned with the opiate problems in every county. And it's to the point that you will see a lot of publicity coming out in a very, very, very short time. And the comment and the wording, and, and, Ms. Goins can correct me if I'm saying it wrong, but I think it's "I'm all in," I believe was the phrase. And it starts from the sheriff, to the chief of police, to the doctors, to the pharmacists, to the firemen, to everybody that's involved, that will have any control or any doing with opiate items and everything related. That we're all in, all the commissioners and department heads, all through the counties, and this is a statewide deal, so it's out there, it's highly being aware of, but now the push to stop or end it is, is in the making. But I get what you're saying, and I think Mr. Martin talked to some of us early in the break room, some of the things he'd already investigated and checking on, he can speak for himself on that.
You'll go back once, I, I first wanna say I thank you for taking the time and effort to do this research, because it is important to Bladen County. And, um, like Life Bridge, I ain't know who Life Bridge was, they're in Dixie, we don't know. That's true. I mean, and we commissioners need help, we cannot do it all by ourselves.
Exactly right.
And when you go back to your list of demands and your questions and stuff, I, as chairman, along with these commissioners, we will get East Point in a room, and, cause Cardinal's not even a picture yet, they might be, but they're not. And we will get you some answers, and we will find out what's going on. I assure you that. So if you got anything else you want to add, or questions you want to do, and I don't have that tire point, I don't blame you.
I sent it earlier today, but I'll make sure you all have it.
Shaw, one thing, one last thing, it's something that they have spoken to me about, that I've been trying to get my fingers around. See, can you find out, I can't find out, what do they mean when they say a open network and a closed network?
Yeah, I noticed he didn't answer that forty the other night.
That's the biggest conflict that you see when you talk about it, is the open and a closed network. You see, if it's closed, then nobody can get in. But we had to deal with how do we open the network, or what they got's a closed network.
They said, I've done research on that, they did say that, and their website says that they're closed, they're a closed network, which they've been saying that they're a closed network, or that they were gonna close it since I worked in behavioral health and mental health. And, but it's not, there have been some court cases where the MCOs have had, I think it's P H, PMH, took a provider, a mental health provider to court, because they were trying to say that they're a closed network. And, uh, the judge ruled against the MCOs. So you may have to fight that in court, but, um, it's, it's not right. There's a lot of things that are not right.
My comment would be, because of the laws, in the last few years, mental health has been just one of the biggest headache, not just providers, but more so for those who need a service.
Right.
They are not getting services. They closed a lot of facilities in the valley, in different areas. It's difficult to get access to care in any kind of county, and other places, it's tough. But I, I applaud what you did, um, it's a lot of work, but it's not gonna be done overnight.
Right.
Cause it's a, you go and get major companies, organizations, and they are, they are closed by themselves.
Right.
Believe it or not. I'm not sure, there's a mental health session that they have here in North Carolina, and I'm, I'm part of that group, but I haven't had the opportunity to participate with it. But I think I will, um, get busy. I will start participating, because I need to know for myself, um, the laws, and how they're really gonna affect our county and our service, our services in Bladen County. So, but thank you, and I guess we're gonna have to do something.
Yes, I appreciate it. And I, I do, I know that these MCOs and LMEs provide a lot of jobs, and there's a lot of good people that work there. Cheryl Harris, the lady that does Bladen County, she, she's included, I mean, she does a great job. But please do not let that deter you, because I know politics, don't let it deter you from requesting what we need here in Bladen County.
Politics is not gonna get in the way of what we're gonna do.
I appreciate it.
I ain't scared of politics, I hear that name.
I'm not either.
That ain't gonna, that ain't gonna happen. We'll be back with it, and we'll, we'll get East Point and get some answers, as a board of commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll make sure you all have that.
Item seven, is, anyone, anyone else like rest of commissioners? Item seven, find that department, Mrs. Lee.
The name is, I want you to review the dashboard for the nine months ending March thirty-first, 2017, and that would be about seventy-five percent of the year. Currently, on the general fund, we have collected eighty-four point oh-six percent of revenues, and spent sixty-nine point four-four percent. On the jail, I will let you know, and I, I've made a boo-boo on the dashboard, you'll see that I didn't include its finishers. I looked at that thing a while ago, and I said, ooh, wow. But we have spent about sixty-three percent, I did look it up right before I came. Solid waste, we've collected ninety-five point one-six percent, and it's spent sixty-seven point five-six percent. Emergency telephone, we have collected fifty-three point four-nine percent, and spent seventy-four point six-five. Water, we've collected seventy-eight point six-five percent, and spent forty-six point four-two. Is there any questions about the dashboard?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Ma'am, Mr. Uncle, and Mr. Todd, we've been told to deal with our meeting, and, um, PM said we were about a month away from the sheriff's office, we're about six, seven weeks away from the jail, and then we're sixty-three cents, sixty-fen in. Department of Social Service, Ms. Vicki Smith?
Good evening, everyone. I've come to you this evening, um, for consideration of approval of two memorandums of understandings. The first one, um, is with caring for children, we also call that Angel Watch. This is a nonprofit corporation that operates, um, a shelter program for children zero to ten. Um, this is a grant-funded, um, program. They are able to assist families that are involved with child protective services. When we get involved with those families, and we find that, um, the parents cannot keep the children safe within their homes, this program will provide free placement up to ninety days for those families. This would hopefully keep us from, um, filing petitions for custody. Typically, sometimes those families, we can't get them to, um, have their homes safe enough within ninety days, but, um, this would eliminate some costs, so we would ask for your signature on that.
Pleasure board.
I have a question from the, this, um, program. I know that it's not going to cost the county anymore, but with the children being removed and placed in this, this pair, um, for up to ninety days, what does that leave the children? The parents do not get back in the state where they're able to care for their child. What's the long-term for the child? They wanna have an additional up to ninety days being displaced from their home? And they want to have an additional up to 90 days being displaced from their home? Because now we've got this free program that we're able to not have to pay for, but it's for the kids. So is it going to like put them up to three more months displaced?
It could possibly do that, because with the families that we work with in Child Protective Services, with our assessments, we have 90 days to work with them. Once you get past that first initial 90 days, you can extend that time. When it comes to the time that we see that they're not making any progress, we are forced to file a petition to take them into our custody. This is, and for the parents, actually, they can make that determination to place, yes, yes. They are the ones that go into this, but we are making the referrals through this agency. And these are foster homes instead of a facility.
Okay, so they have already gone through the
The MAP, the training, to become foster parents. They are licensed foster homes through this agency.
How many children do we have to take in service in child, in foster care at this time?
In foster, well, now, these are not foster care cases. These would be cases that we're working with in Child Protective Services.
How many children will be talking about?
At this time, I would not have that information because the plate, the ages that they're looking at is zero to 10.
I have another question.
Various ages.
Did you, you want to call another?
No, that's not.
With the, these particular parents, or how are they being monitored during those 90 days? What are the steps that the assess or whomever are taking to make sure that those parents who are not quite in the system yet, but heading in that direction for what they're going to lose their children?
They are in, they are in assessments with Child Protective Services. We would continue our mandates following up with the placement provider, sharing what's going on while the children are there. We'd still be making our contact with the parents and other collaterals. And if there are services involved like counseling, we would also be making those contacts. Our normal jobs as child protective social workers would still be going on.
Okay, so this would, this would be an added load to your social workers right now? Do I think these workers who are handing in limit with making the
No, we're still, it would just be a place, before we have to file a petition, the parents could be working with this. In Child Protective Services, when we see that a family cannot keep their children safe within the home, we can ask them to name a placement. They can name relatives of placements. This would be if a family's here that doesn't have any relatives, neighbors that they would recommend, this is a placement that they could look to.
Any other questions? How much grant fund do you have on the
This, this is, it's not us. This is, this is with Karen, Carolina, obviously the name of it again. Let me get my glasses on. North Carolina, Caring for Children.
So you just request the fund?
We're just making referrals for the families to this. This does not involve any funding with DSS.
First by Ms. Brett, second, that's a good, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? I'll be.
Okay, our second memorandum of understanding is with East Coast Migrant Head Start Project. This is a program that gears up to our migrants that come in with the blueberry season that will begin in May. This is our annual MOU. We go out and we provide training to their staff on child abuse and neglect indicators, recognizing and responding to those needs. And we also would accept referrals of abuse or neglect and investigate or assess those situations as well.
Any discussion, any question? First by Ms. Brett, second by
Second.
Ms. Mother Goins, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Vicky. Hamilton, Human Services, Mr. David?
Good evening. Just two items for your consideration this evening. Both of these items are the same agreement. We've seen the first one in Columbus County before, but there were some changes that were necessary. So just to remind you of that. The changes that need to be made was, are mostly concerning the payment. Columbus County is not able to do this for free. So you'll notice in item four, I believe it is. Four D. There were five, the patient would be required to pay $75 upfront for a biopsy. So what this is, is a cost of, wouldn't sell biopsy procedure. We're not able, able to perform here in our health department because we don't have the equipment or the staffing. Like I said, this agreement was approved, but the only addition was the cost to the patient. It won't be a cost to us. The county won't, we won't be paying that charge.
If that says $50, is that, or fee that if a person in and cannot pay it, they don't get the biopsy or the situation?
Well, in that case, we would refer them to, the second agreement is with the Blade Medical Associates. And we'll try to work with them on fee. Or then, to them first.
We're going to pay Columbus County, and Bladen County's going to bill free?
No, we're not, we're not paying Columbus County.
I mean, the patient's got to pay Columbus County, and Bladen County does it free.
Blade Medical Associates, if you look at their agreement, it's only going to be 30% below their normal charge. So that's not going to be
Why are we doing it in Columbus County then? Cape Girardeau can't handle it all?
Mostly simply as a backup. Just to have a backup in case Blade Medical Associates can't get them in, and we need to get it done, we can refer them to a secondary outlet.
Is it under the Health Department? This is a backup, and I'll go to Cape Girardeau first?
Yes. Special assistance won't be needed.
Pleasure, any more questions? We go first, we go to Cape Girardeau first. Pleasure, board. You said both of them the same? Can we do both of them, or you want to?
It's up to you. They're the same agreement. The only difference is the item's under number four, the charges. So if you want to take two separate
Okay, we'll do it a. Let's do it, made the motion, it's a, it's a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.